Village of Green Hills regular council meeting for January 22, 2019 to order. Clerk call the roll.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Mr. Greaves.
Here.
Mr. Holt.
Here.
Ms. Herman.
Here.
Mr. Lee.
Here.
Ms. Matts.
Here.
And Ms. Walther.
Here.
Okay, all right, Ms. Walther has a prayer.
Lord, we ask you to send your Spirit of servanthood upon all of us gathered here this evening to do your work for the benefit of all in our community. We ask you to bless our elected and appointed officials so they may deliberate with wisdom and act with courage. Bless the members of our community who come here to speak before council so they state their cause with honesty and humility. Lord, we ask you to bless us all and that everything we do here tonight will move us, will move you to welcome us one day into your kingdom as good and faithful servants. We ask this in the name of our brother Jesus, amen.
Amen.
My fellow citizens to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we move to the approval of minutes, the chief has something that he'd like to present.
Actually, both chiefs.
Both chiefs, yes.
Okay.
If we can get him here. Well, Michael, we have a citizen appreciation award from both the police chief and the fire chief for you tonight, and it's fitting that you be recognized for your life-saving actions recently. And I'd just like to tell you a little description of what occurred. On Monday, January 15, 2019, an elderly resident of our community ventured onto her front porch to retrieve her mail. Due to the icy and snowy conditions, she fell from her front porch into her snow-covered yard. She sustained injuries serious enough to render her unable to move. Although her husband was home, he is suffering from an illness that left him unable to assist. The resident, stuck in deep snow and sub-freezing weather, frantically yelled for help and even threw snowballs to attack, attract attention. Fortunately, you happened to drive down the street during this time and both saw and heard the resident's pleas for help. You ran from your car, you called 911, and obtained a blanket to warm the victim and stayed with her until help arrived. I arrived on the scene along with Assistant Fire Chief Oscar Hoffman, and we were both at the scene, and we affirm that your actions likely saved the victim's life.
So, before I read the rest of this, Michael, I want to tell you that the resident's son is here today, and I spoke to her grandson today, and she is in the hospital, but she's going to be moving to a rehab facility very, very soon. She had major extensive rebuilding of her leg, and I have no doubt that your actions saved her life that day.
Wow.
So, your actions have served to keep our community and its residents safe. The men and women of the Green Hills Police and Fire Departments and the officials of our community are grateful for and appreciate your efforts to save and preserve the life of one of our citizens. We are honored to acknowledge your accomplishment, certify our appreciation, and wish you well in your future endeavors. In recognition thereof, we have caused our signatures and seal to be affixed on this 22nd day of January in the year of our Lord 2019, and it's signed by Chief Frobelman, myself, the village manager, and the mayor, David Moore. Congratulations, outstanding.
Let's send him around to shake our...
By making you walk, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's my paper boy? Thank you very much for your service.
Did you have anything you wanted to say?
Honestly, I don't know, I feel like I did what anybody else would have done, but I don't know. But growing up in this community, I've been helped so many times, even as a kid, by other people, and even those coming around the corner from me. And then on top of that, my dad's been in public service for over 25 years, my mom's a principal, and had been teaching for 25 years, so they've taught me to always help when I can. So I feel like that's just what I was supposed to do.
Thank you.
So I just, it's really my parents that did it, not me.
And Mr. Jones there used to cut my grass when he was a youngster. And actually, his mother cleaned my house at times when I was a young person here in Green Hills. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, moving on, approval of minutes, we have the council minutes of December 11, 2018, and January 8, 2019. Do we have any corrections?
No, I'm moved that we approve the minutes of December 11, 2018, regular meeting, and January 8, 2019, work session.
Okay, so approved. Okay. Now's the time, this is the time for citizens to comment on matters before council. When recognized, please come forward to the lectern, give your name and address, and state your comments or questions. This is not intended to be a dialogue with council or village staff. If you have questions, the questions will be recorded and referred to the manager's office for response. This will allow time for thoughtful and thorough consideration to be given to each question. Council meetings are recorded for ease of transcription. Comments are limited to three minutes.
Hi, I'm Mayneke Masonhalter, 154 Junefield. Last week, legislation was introduced, H.R. 530, the Accelerating Wireless Broadband Development by Empowering Local Communities Act of 2019. It would overturn recently passed legislation limiting the ability of local governments to regulate the deployment and installment of 5G wireless infrastructure. Since you took an oath to protect the welfare of residents here, I'm asking tonight that you immediately alert residents to this legislation so that they can decide whether or not they want to contact state and federal officials about it. I am asking you to schedule a public hearing, have Ms. Kovak included into her blog, and submit an article for consideration to the Green Hills Journal. Since 2017, 214 doctors and scientists in the U.S. and worldwide have asked for a moratorium on 5G installation due to health and environmental risks. A 5G court case in England was won last year. Council members had allowed 5G to be installed in street lamps, and residents became sick. Some had stuporths. For the last few years, security experts have strongly advised against installing 5G in the Internet of Things because of its almost 75% failure rate. Despite this, a few weeks ago, 5G started being promoted as necessary for national security, even by Glenn Beck. However, yesterday, the moratoriums published an op-ed written by former FCC, Federal Communications Commission, and longtime chairman, and longtime 5G proponent, Tom Mueller. He said 5G is not secure. Residents should be informed about all of this, don't you think? I also ask that comments about 5G made by Mayor Dave Moore at the October 23, 2018 meeting be added to the official minutes. They start with, "I have a comment on the 5G thing. I guess if you've checked your emails, there's been some discussion back and forth that relates to work being done in the city of Forest Park. It's supposedly a 5G system piece." And then go all the way through to, "And frankly, I sort of look forward to being able to control traffic lights and other things with it, and having autonomous vehicles, so I'm putting my two cents in and saying I'm in favor of it, and if this person doesn't agree with me, so be it. My only big concern is hacking, but anything can be hacked." So, thank you for your time.
Okay. Anybody else?
Good evening, I'm Anna Steele, 150 Junefield Avenue. Thank you for serving our community, and I also wanted to ask you to please do what you can to inform the residents of our communities about this new bill, H.R., or House Resolution 530. It's called Accelerating Wireless Broadband Development by Empowering Local Communities Act of 2019. So, I just think it'd be great to have that power put back into the hands of the local communities, and I think that's something that people would, or should care about, and if they don't know that this is something that they should be contacting their representatives about, they aren't going to be able to do that. So, if you could do what you can, I'd appreciate it. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay, I'm not used to doing this, but I want to express that I share the lady's concern about the new technology, and I guess my main thing is that I'm comfortable with a device up on the hill, but from what I understand, there's going to be multiple smaller things in, within the neighborhood area that, that's something I'm kind of uncomfortable with, but probably going to have to get used to, and so I just wanted to lend my support to what they said. And in my remaining time, I'd like to express my appreciation for the people who've cleared the snow out from around their fire plugs, which I've done for 34 years, hopefully some more, and, and even though it's a good thing, I caution people that snow plowed is pretty heavy, and so unless you're in pretty good shape and maybe younger than I am, you should carefully consider if you're going to do that. That's all I have to say right now.
Name and address.
Todd Bricker, 2 January Court.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, reports of village officials, municipal manager, Yvonne Kovak.
Thank you, Mayor. I too would like to start out with the snow events that we had over the last two weekends, which I know we would all like to forget, but I do want to thank the members of the Service Department, excellent work that they did. They had long hours, and it was a really tough job. You know, the first day was a lot of snow in a short time, but it was very wet and heavy snow. You know, they were talking about how as they plowed it and it curls up into big balls up above like their trunk, so it was quite a snow to deal with, but I think they did a great job. Yeah, over the two weekends, rain, wind, snow, ice, more snow, white-out conditions. It was quite, quite a couple of weekends. So, cars on the streets always present challenges, particularly in the cul-de-sacs. It was actually very noticeable, though, to the crews this past weekend, that a lot of people had moved their cars off this go-around to make it a lot easier for clearing the snow, so that was a great thing. I have also gotten a number of questions from residents as to whether or not we do have a snow emergency program, which we do not currently have, but we discussed it in committee, and that'll be something that council looks into for the future. Also want to let you know that the local historic district meetings are continuing. We've had four already, they've gone very well, and I'd, first, I'd like to thank the Presbyterian Community Church for allowing us to host the first four meetings in their facility. It allowed us to like take a little bit closer to the residents, and we had really good turnouts at those meetings in spite of the weather, because we had some very, very cold nights for those meetings. But our next one is scheduled for Tuesday, January 29. That will actually be in the building here. It's for the, most of the D block, with the exception of some homes along Drummond, but it will be the D's. Final meeting will be on February 11. That will be EF and the rest of the Drummond Street addresses. So, we're moving right along with that. I wanted to let you know, if you remember last fall, someone came and presented to council, asking that we consider, it's a member of our pool, asking that we consider some changes to the hours that could allow more, more swimming in the period of time when we, when school starts, really, when we are open only on weekends and Labor Day weekend. So, working with SwimSafe, we have come up with a scenario that would allow us to accommodate additional hours during that time period at no additional cost to us. So we're looking at remaining open on those weekdays from 4 until 8. That gives the children time to get out of school and come and spend some hours at the pool. And the exchange there is to close one hour early on Sundays, so we would close at 7:00 p.m. on Sundays instead of 8:00 p.m. And also through the weeks, between the hours of 1 and 6, eliminating one lifeguard. They have had nine, we would go down to eight. Obviously, if we be swamped with people, they'd call somebody in, but on a regular basis for scheduling purposes, we could, we will eliminate one lifeguard during those times, and that would free up enough hours and funding to allow us to stay open for the additional time period during those two weeks. So, it is my intention to respond to that member by letter. I'll post it on the website as well, so people are aware of the change, and hopefully that'll promote some new memberships for the pool. So, any questions on that? Does it sound good to everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Code enforcement, always a popular topic. One of the things that we're going to do is we are going to purchase bright-colored stickers that have code sections quoted on them. It will be like an initial notice to occupants, especially not necessarily the property owners, that there's a violation, and we're thinking if cans are sitting out, or sofas, chairs, furniture, you know, whatever. Will we be able to put this brightly colored sticker on it to give people a little bit quicker notice, and when we have to go through the letter, we'll still send the letter, but it'll be an initial, like, oh my gosh, there's a sticker on my stuff, I better look at it. It'll also help you guys, you know, other staff, to know that we're dealing with the issues. If they don't see a sticker, let us know. So, we just thought it might be one way to help speed that process up a little bit and get it quicker. You know, if they come home, see a sticker on their stuff, hopefully they'll drag it back, get it covered, whatever, whatever the sticker says.
Is there information on next steps on the sticker, or who to contact, or?
Um, we will probably put, "Call here."
Okay.
Call NIC.
Just so they know, yeah.
Whatever the issue would be.
We'll give them your number.
Do that.
That would be fine. Or Jack can give them my emails and stuff. I just thought it would be nice. It's one thing to be notified, but also the next question is, okay, what do I do if I'm not complying, you know? What's the next step?
Yeah. And I don't know how much you can fit on a sticker, but we'll put as much, even if it's like, you know, this is out, in non-compliance, pull it back till whatever, yes, go ahead.
The letter that we send initially, when a couch is out, or something like that, would say you have until usually 72 hours if it's posted at the property, usually longer when you have to resort to snail mail. So I would imagine one of the options would be to be able to write on the sticker, you have until a certain amount of time to remove it. If it isn't removed by that point, then we would, our code would take it into effect, and it would be removed. But that's just one of the options.
Yeah, I guess, I think that's fine, but for somebody who wants to comply and their purpose is to comply, the next question is, what am I doing that I should be doing? So if there's a phone number, you know?
Yeah, that would absolutely be, yeah.
I mean, I know that there's the legal part of, okay, the clock's ticking, and we can charge you for this, but if someone wants to do the right thing, it would be nice to say, "Call here, we can let you know."
Sure.
All you have to do is cover it. We have covers here, or you can buy a cover, whatever the, I know you can't list everything that's necessary.
Sure. But, but yeah, I mean, we hope to, the whole purpose is to get a little bit quicker turnaround.
Sure.
Sell more information. We can either give them on the sticker or a number to call to get that info, to do a little bit quicker.
Great, but, no, that's good.
We will certainly do that, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
And so, as, as much information that has already gone out, telling people Rumpy won't take a sofa or a mattress unless it's covered because of, with plastic, because of bed bugs, potential, you know, we still have a lot of people that do that. And I talked to Yvonne, she'll be also sending out the brochure that we Oh, the flyer. ...made up a year or so ago to residents again, and new residents get them in their packet, and so.
Right.
Can you just stick the sticker with the brochure underneath it?
We might be able to.
Yeah. No, that's good. Yeah.
And then realize, too, we do have some people who are repeat offenders, so they've got multiple brochures, but that's, we will certainly do that. Okay, the Recreation and Services Survey remains online. We have, gosh, do we only have like a week left? I can't believe January's gone. Till January 31 to respond, so if anybody is watching and they've not responded, please go online and fill out our survey. We would love your input. If you need a hard copy, call us, we'll send it to you, email it to you, whatever, and anybody needs any hard copies, we have some downstairs for you, okay?
I'll get some after the meeting.
Great, okay, good. The new entryway signs are in, and they look great. I want to thank Pastor Yizer and First Baptist Church for, they was just great to work with in helping us move forward with getting an easement for this sign there, so I do want to thank them for their cooperation and willingness to do that. And that particular sign, I do just want to note for anybody who wonders, that sign will ultimately have a stone base constructed around it. Now that we've had the snows, I'm going to guess probably in spring, but maybe we'll have an early spring, so, but that is the intent, is to have a base around that particular sign, so. There will be an increase in the garbage fee as of March 1st. Hard to believe we are already, already in the fourth year. We'll be starting the fourth year of the five-year contract March 1st, so our selection at the time was to keep the cost the same for the first three years, and then there'll be a modest increase this year, and I think an additional one next year, but it'll be 40 cents per month, so, beginning March 1st. Golf course and pool, I did put an ad for a $10 off coupon, actually, in the, this month's Green Hills Journal, so if you haven't seen it yet, or if you've lost your journal, we have additional copies here. We, you could use that this month only for $10 off your pool, or golf, or both, memberships. So, you want to do that soon, that too ends at the end of this month, so. Also, in follow-up to our discussion at work session, an advertisement for the golf course manager, and it was changed to reflect either an individual or a firm, for that, for that work to be done, has been placed on Indeed.com. That's been our source for our last two individuals that we were able to hire. And that is all I have at this point.
Can I?
I have a couple of questions. On the code enforcement, the stickers of the violations, that also includes the shopping center?
It can, they tend to have different kinds of violations, but it could.
There are a couple of citizens asked me what we're doing for that, and since we are starting this program with the sticker for the residences, I'm sure that the next question I'm going to hear was, how about the shopping center? Also, on the previous time, we had a member of the code enforcement people coming over for our retreat and give us some kind of information on how often and all of that. Is there any, any place that we can find that information available online when they come over, how many violations they find, things like that?
We don't have that information online. I do receive a summary at the end of each month, and I've also, one of the additional things I want to do is have them to the services committee meeting maybe once a quarter to go through cases, you know, explain a little what they do, how they do it, give us time to ask them questions, you know, talk about procedures.
Because I would like to have some idea of how many of those violations they find, let's say quarterly, or something like that, where essentially are the most of, et cetera. I also have a curiosity question that I hope you can solve for me. When the shopping center is doing some work in the shopping center area, and sometimes they're erecting some wall, and the work is doing, is being done behind that wall, is there a permit that they have for doing that? How do we know what they're doing? How, how, how do you know?
Well, we usually see it, and then we have to send the inspector down to find out what they are doing, and issue a stop-work order if necessary, because no, they, they do not come to us on a regular basis to seek the proper permits.
But they should come to you.
They should be, it's, so it's a constant thing for us.
Okay.
But we hear about it, we send them, right? Like every time.
Unfortunately, the way that it works is we have to, they have either the inspector or the village has to dismiss the work under, being undertaken. So if, if something happens, we call the inspector, let them know that it's happening, they'll come up and they'll issue a stop-work order. Every business that we can, we tell them to come in and get permits. Businesses are pretty good about it. Ownership, otherwise, but the, the understanding is there, it's the follow-through that is unfortunately lacking from time to time.
Is there recourse to follow after so many encours for the ownership of the violations, or?
Because it's handled on a case-by-case basis, there is an increased permit fee for work done without permit, I believe it's double, whatever the billing fee is for that particular project. That, of course, assumes that they're going to apply for the permit at all. It, it can be difficult to stay up on it. You know, repeated violations means repeated policing of that area and that work. As far as anything long-term specific, because it is case by case, we would have to investigate what that might look like, but I'm not aware of anything immediately.
Do you have any comments on that?
No, I mean, really, what, what David said is, is correct. When you do something without the permit, there is a penalty for that, but there is no increased, if you do it 10 times, there is no more increased penalty, it's just the double the permit fee.
Is that the standard across other communities? That's the Hamilton County Building Fee.
Yeah, okay.
That's the Hamilton County Code. And since we're talking further about the permit, are there permits involving, if someone is digging, does one have to ask for a permit for, to dig anyplace?
To dig, just to dig a hole?
Well, if they're, if they're in the construction around, or they're erecting a wall, or they're putting a, I don't know, a tower or anything?
Is it commercial or residential?
I'm thinking about the residential, but also the commercial around the shopping center area.
The only, the only thing that I can think of, without any specific building project in mind, would be a call to check utilities. Of course, they only do that, oops, only works in the right-of-way on private property that's, you know, they dig at their own risk. They would have to call Underground Detective or one of those.
Can you give us maybe a little overview of when is a building permit required?
Anytime you make structural changes to a structure, as redundant as that sounds, enlarge it, change its layout, anything, anything that changes the nature of a structure or increases its size, or decreases its size in the case of demolition. We also require zoning certificates for smaller projects like fences or concrete work, that kind of thing. But a building permit is the first step towards an inspection, so any work that's covered by the building code would be, by the Hamilton County Building Code, would require a permit if the code requires it, so that they can complete the inspection and make sure that the work is performed to the code.
And in the cases of the, the 5Gs, for example, no, no permit is required?
There, there would be, there would be permitting required for work in the right-of-way.
Okay.
We have not received any permits for any installation in any Green Hills right-of-way or private property. As far as work that would occur on private property, that would still require some kind of a zoning review. We still would require plans for that. Like I said, we have not received any permit applications for that.
Okay.
It, it wouldn't happen unnoticed. As far as the intricacies of what, you know, the state or the FCC permits, as far as our oversight, I'm not immediately up to date on them because we haven't had any, and I don't really, to be quite honest, foresee any. Um, and I don't really, to be quite honest, foresee any. But as far as excavation in the right-of-way, that does, even if it's due, making an emergency prepare, they still submit something to the village to inform us that they're doing that work.
But not always on a timely basis.
Not always on a timely basis.
It's like a month later or so.
But, uh, but we are made aware of it in, you know, usually within a few days, so.
Commercially, if you're digging underground, you have to put in a, uh, there's iDig or there's eDig tickets on oops. I, I do so boring through my job, and so if it's commercial, um, you have to do it forty-eight hours before you're going to actually be digging in the ground commercially. And then residential, even if it's on the right-of-way, you can still apply to have an iTicket put in for your residential, and have, they will come out and mark everything so you know where to dig.
Yes, when, um, we're getting a new porch put on. We got all of our permits, but we called ahead and they spray painted all the way up to the, the house.
Okay.
And then when your contractor doesn't start it, when they say they're going to start it, you can call them again and they'll re-apply the spray paint, so yes.
For instance, as an example, the, the new entryway signage, they had to spray paint, oops had to spray paint that, and then they had to do the installation work within forty-eight hours without that marking being completed. So it is time.
But you do not need a permit for something like replacing an appliance, but if you were replacing something structurally, you would.
Correct, you don't, you don't need, you don't need a permit to put new counters or new cabinets in your kitchen, or replace an appliance, or replace your flooring unless you're drastically reconstructing your home. Um, but no, it, for general kind of maintenance and improvements like that in that scale, a permit typically isn't required.
Okay, and, uh, Ms. Kovak, I also would like to thank you for bringing up the, uh, the question of the pool hours, because I know that that was, uh, for a while back, and I really appreciated that, and, uh, the fact that you're going to be sending a letter. I'd really like that, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving on, Law Director Jeff Forbes.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I think my written report is probably distributed to council. Um, you know, the couple of highlights of that, um, it, it does address House Bill 228, which we've talked about in here before, which was sort of ironically known as the Stand Your Ground Bill, even though by the time it got to the final version, the stand your ground part had been removed from the bill, but we still can refer to it as the Stand Your Ground Bill. That's the one that got vetoed by the governor, but then the state legislature overrode the veto, so it did pass. Um, the reason it's relevant, that it is relevant to municipalities is that there's some preemption language in there that says municipalities cannot, um, pass ordinances that restrict firearms. We've already been in touch, we've already talked to the police chief, we're already looking, we, we don't see any issues that we need to deal with. Uh, because the second part of that is, it makes it easier for folks to sue municipalities if you do have an improper firearm restriction. We, we're comfortable with the way our ordinances stand, so no issues there. The only other thing I mentioned is just an update on some pending legal matters on the, um, Andwan versus Village of Green Hills case. That's in the Court of Appeals, it's been fully briefed. We're just waiting for the Court of Appeals to issue, um, an oral argument date, so it can be argued, and then we'll wait after that for a decision.
Is there a guarantee that there will be oral arguments, or could it be dismissed?
Um, oral arguments were requested, um, but the court always has the authority, if they want, to dismiss it on their own. They haven't done that yet, so we anticipate that they'll issue a date for oral arguments.
And for the benefit of those listening in our community, can you kind of recap the case?
Absolutely. This goes back to October of 2017, um, when the plaintiff sued the village to seek an injunction to halt the demolition. The village had begun a process to demolish some village-owned property. Uh, the plaintiff filed a lawsuit to get an injunction to stop that demolition. Uh, the trial court, uh, the, the common pleas court dismissed the case, said she didn't have any standing to even bring suit, and had not identified any harm or injury to her that would allow her to bring suit, so it was thrown out. And she appealed that, and that went to the court of, that takes it up to the Court of Appeals. Um, the way it works in the Court of Appeals is they give you a briefing schedule, so each side gets to file a brief. Um, in this case, um, the plaintiff, or now plaintiff-appellant, was issued, I think, three extensions, uh, to file the brief. It ultimately did get filed, and then we filed ours, uh, very quickly after that. And so at this, at this point, I mean, the, the case was thrown out at the trial court. We completed the project, and now we're just waiting for the Court of Appeals to deal with the case.
So the remedy of the case was for us to stop the demolition?
Mm-hmm. This was a, this was a complaint in, in seeking an injunction, which would halt the demolition. And that was, it was denied, it was thrown out, and the trial court made it very clear that there was, they had taken no action to prevent us from proceeding with the project, so we did. And now the remedy that was initially sought is impossible to.
Okay.
To receive.
Thank you.
Now, is your experience that, um, oral arguments probably will go on?
Uh, the way it works in First District Court of Appeals is that by default, you get an oral argument unless the parties, uh, submit it and say, we don't want.
We don't want one, correct.
But we didn't say that. We, if, if the court's going to hear it, we want to make sure we have a chance to.
To, yeah, correct. And then I have a question for the House Bill 228. Uh, when it says in here that the bill, as, as proposed, the bill would have removed the duty to retreat, and that's not in the language, does, that means that we have to retreat?
I'm going to tell you that I, that portion of the bill is, is a much more of a question for police and prosecutors, uh, so I didn't, uh, I have not focused on that part. My focus of the bill has been on how it impacts municipal legislation. Um, I, I can tell you that, what it says is the bill would have removed the duty to retreat.
It means it didn't remove it, so therefore it still stands.
Right.
There's no change to law that was in effect.
Right.
Correct, okay, all right.
I have a question on that, if I may ask.
You can ask.
One of the things we didn't discuss in the past, you have told us that firearms were prohibited in this chamber because of the fact that this building houses the police department. Is that still in effect?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Just checking.
Yes, the police department's still here, or?
Both.
Yes.
Good, good to know. Jeff, uh, do you have anything on HR 530 on the 5G installation?
I, I just looked it up, um, while we were.
Yeah, I know you're being caught unaware.
Um, I mean, all I can tell you is that it was introduced on January 14th.
Okay.
It was introduced, and it's been referred to the House Committee on Energy and Commerce.
Okay, thank you.
I have one more question, and suppose that there are damages involved, who is liable for the damages caused by that, of putting the 5Gs? If there's any health hazard or anything like that? Who would be liable for, for that?
That is a very speculative question.
Right.
Well, I don't know, if, you know, if.
Well, you can't sue the federal government.
Yeah, but.
I would think it would go back to the provider.
I mean, I, I would assume the carrier or the provider is who you would sue.
And they would be bankrupt in two minutes, and you would, it wouldn't result in anything. I mean, I think that's so speculative ahead of what, you know, the biggest question is, if there's a real issue, we wouldn't want to wait till we get to a suit situation, right? So the question is.
I, I think what is most important at the local level for you to understand is that your municipal ability is only, by the way, it's, it's limited to, in the right-of-way, in your public right-of-way. And right now, the state law does give you very limited ability to regulate small cell facilities in your right-of-way. You cannot prohibit them completely, but you can have some regulations about that. That's at the state, that's a state law level. And then we have this recent FCC ruling, which would seem to take all that away and say you don't have any authority to do anything. And I don't know anything about HR 530 other than what we've heard tonight, but what it sounds like. And I can tell you, from the title that I'm reading, it says that the purpose of that is to, uh, essentially, to provide that certain actions by the FCC shall have no force or effect. So it's in essence to reverse what the FCC ruling just did, which would, for Ohio municipalities, even if that FCC ruling is reversed, all that does is put you back in the space of what we have right now, what the state law allows you or doesn't allow you to do.
And then what do you think the result is if we ignore? In other words, we decide or pass something contrary to what we're allowed to pass or?
What's, what's the?
What, you're saying passing, passing, passing an ordinance that's in violation of Ohio revise code?
What is the result of that? Let's say we took those steps.
Well, I can tell you that the state law on this topic is one that was introduced, uh, that specifically was introduced to, um, to preempt your home rule authority, because this, the state has determined that this is a situation that needs statewide, um, a statewide remedy. So, uh, at least initially, what I would tell you is you would not be able to rely on your home rule authority to deviate from the state law. Uh, you'd have to abide by the state law. If you pass, this is again, this is a little speculative, but in general, if you were to pass an ordinance that violates the state law, and then a provider came in and applied to put, uh, small cell facilities in your right-of-way, and you deny it as a, a result of your local ordinance that is in violation of the state law, you'll get sued, you'll lose, and you'll probably have to pay attorney's fees, and you have to pay damages, and in the end, you'll end up with the small cell facility in your right-of-way anyway.
Right, so I, I guess the reason I ask it, and I know it's speculative, is because before you decide to step in front of a moving train, it's good to weigh the cost. And I'm not saying you don't ever step in front of a moving train, um, uh, but it's important to know what's at stake if we make that decision.
Right, I, I can tell you, the state law allows you to have certain, uh, design guidelines, certain height limitations, uh, but it does not permit you to.
Say no.
Say no.
Right.
And it does not, it does not permit you to even consider it from a zoning perspective.
Right.
They, they submit their application, and if it meets the state guidelines and your, whatever your local guidelines are, it'll be permitted.
And, and there's actually Ohio Supreme Court case law.
Oh, yeah, I'm not, I'm not debating any of that, I'm just trying to understand the lay of the land.
All right, moving on, Acting Clerk of Counsel David Lumson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Resolutions 42, 43, and 44 passed at the last regular meeting were posted as required, as was the January community calendar. Thank you.
Chief of Police Neil, any questions to David?
No.
Okay, Chief of Police Neil Fergelman.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just as an aside, anyone that's leaving right now, please be very cautious on the stairwells. It got a little wet when people were coming in. Uh, someone almost fell going down earlier, so, uh, one of our officers put a rug there, so just be very careful, cautious that you don't fall down stairs. Hopefully it'll dry soon.
No questions.
We mentioned in our monthly report that was published late last week that, uh, 2019 began as a deadly year for police officers. Uh, at that writing, there have been seven officers killed in the line of duty in the first two weeks of the year. Uh, that has now gone up to nine. Uh, in addition to that, there's been, uh, a number of officers who've been shot, uh, sadly shot in the head in some cases, so it's really been a deadly year. Um, we would ask folks that, uh, may get stopped by an officer, if they notice that the officers are a little heightened in their awareness that that is why. We'd all just, we'd like everybody to go home at the end of the day, including those we stop, and including us. Uh, one of the things that we feel here in Green Hills that's very important, we have a very good relationship with our community, and, uh, folks are usually very open, honest, and helpful, and, uh, we will, we will try and continue with that community-oriented policing, and we highly value the cooperation of our residents here. Late last week, one of our officers captured a countywide award. Officer Zach Clark was given a very prestigious award by the Hamilton County Police Association at their annual banquet. Uh, that was the Clarence Sid Caesar Award for Investigative Excellence. Uh, that is a result of his investigative work on the bargains and buyouts theft case, where there was a, a loss that would have been targeted at over a hundred thousand dollars, had not, uh, he orchestrated the stop of thousands of dollars worth of stolen furniture that were being transported to downtown Cincinnati. So, uh, we join the Hamilton County Police Association in commending him for his excellent efforts. We had a lot of fun last month with Shop With A Cop. We had, uh, five young residents of Green Hills who went shopping with us down the road, and, uh, we saw lots of smiles, uh, and, uh, they spent, uh, most of the, uh, morning with us, and, uh, I think they had a very Merry Christmas as a result of that. We had just as much fun as they did. Uh, we did have a, a somber event on December 23rd, and, uh, that was when we received calls of shots being fired in the vicinity of Cromwell and Wenton. When the officers arrived, they found, uh, shell casings and drugs in the parking lot. There was a door-to-door canvas, and that eventually revealed, uh, two victims that had been shot at, luckily not shot. Um, and through some very good investigative work by the officers on the scene, it was picked up by our Corporal Brian Johnston. Uh, we charged, uh, a young man by the name of Dominic Hans with aggravated robbery. Uh, he was found in the Butler County Jail because he had committed a, uh, or is alleged to have committed a, uh, a, another criminal act up in Fairfield right after he left Green Hills, so, uh, we will be going forward with the prosecution of Mr. Hans. We had a couple stolen cars, uh, only one in our jurisdiction, and Officer Patton recovered that one. Uh, we had, uh, another one where Officer Richie, who was in his first week of solo patrol, uh, ran up late and saw that an SUV traveling on Wenton was reported stolen in Mount Healthy earlier. Um, the driver did not stop and, uh, eventually crashed on Miles Road just south of our jurisdiction. Uh, that was a textbook execution of the, uh, pursuit, and, uh, we were able to, uh, get everyone in custody without serious injury, and, um, Officer Richie did an excellent job in, uh, in that incident. We had another stolen car, um, that was where people noticed a lot of activity because Springfield Township had stopped a car early in the morning, and, uh, three of the suspects were apprehended relatively quickly. One was on the loose in the vicinity of Carini, and through that neighborhood, and, uh, we were searching for that young man most of the day. And, uh, before nightfall came, we, along with Springfield Township, made a perimeter and located him back in the wood line, and so he was, he was taken into custody so that, uh, the residents were safe that evening. Just as a reminder to anyone who might be listening, I know the weather has been very cold and it's very tempting to warm up your car. There's two things that you can do. Number one, lock it, have a spare key. And number two, keep an eye on it while it's warming up. Uh, it is illegal in Ohio to, uh, warm an unattended car and leave it running unattended. Many people will think they can run into a Maristop or some kind of convenience store quickly and get what they need, and keep the car running and keep it warm. Uh, unfortunately, as our experience has shown within the last month, there are folks that are waiting to, uh, take that car off your hands, so don't do it. We've mentioned a number of times that, uh, it's very important to keep your cars locked, not to keep valuables in the cars that are visible, and, uh, that will really help us reduce our crime rate relatively, uh, oh, I guess it was last year or the year before, we were rated at the second, the second safest community in southwestern Ohio. By keeping your cars locked, I think maybe we can get to number one, so we ask everybody to help us with that. Uh, we had some community policing efforts that extended all the way to downtown Cincinnati. Sergeant Luke's, who was just in here earlier, uh, was on his way to court last month, and he, uh, encountered a young woman downtown with a number of children. She was very confused, she didn't know where to go, she was trying to keep all the kids out of the street, and, uh... She was trying to keep all the kids out of the street, and on his way to court, he took the time to make sure that she got to where she needed to go. And she called the next day just to say that she was so impressed that an officer from Green Hills would go out of his way to help her. So we commend him for his helpful attitude, even though that wasn't his community, exercised a little community policing downtown. We have some tips on winter weather, things to keep you safe. You can find those on our website, so anyone that's listening may want to check that out in the event we have any, God forbid, any power outages due to the frozen temperatures that we've had. During last month, we investigated nine accidents. That was up from four in December of 2017. Six crimes, that was up from five last December. 419 other incidents. We had 605 contacts with citizens. 334 of those were dispatched or received by phone here, and 271 of those were self-initiated by our officers. We provided assistance to the public in 94 instances. We assisted other agencies 31 times, made 43 criminal arrests, and 46 traffic arrests. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Can I ask your questions to the Chief?
Mr. Grease may correct me, but I think you might run into problems with your insurance company if you leave your keys in the car and it gets stolen. So I don't believe it's covered.
And that's, that's most likely why that law is in place.
So you may be out, not only a car, but...
More than deductible.
I think at least one of our council members, if she were to leave her car running, would probably go and confront the would-be robber real quickly if she could, she'd probably be watching and be packing.
I have a question for the Chief. You mentioned something about the possibility of power outages and so forth. How are we, how close are we to have a backup system?
That's probably a question for the manager, because she has been working diligently on that.
Right. And we're gathering a lot of information on it, as I don't know how long it would actually take a generator to come in or the work to get scheduled, but it's something we hope to do in the next two to three months, sooner if possible.
Well, the thought crossed my mind when I heard the ice and the skylights and the winds howling, because they were horrendous. And I thought, oh, here we go again.
Yeah. We're working on it.
She's actually been keeping us updated in her reports, too, about it.
Okay.
I will comment on the cars. My car's a remote start, which a lot of new cars are coming with. But when you do the remote start, the car's locked.
Yeah.
So, and then if somebody even broke in to get into the car, it's still, even though it's running, you still can't operate it.
Doing technology great.
My car turns off. You do the remote start, once you unlock it, it turns off completely, and then you have to restart it.
Restart it again, yeah.
So each of them have a different...
Mine starts when you crank it.
Mine's not that cool.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, the mayor's report. I have a couple months of court receipts now that the system is working. So for the month of November, get my eyes focused here, we had, State of Ohio received $1,362, Hamilton County $51, Village of Green Hills $6,623. And she doesn't have the total there. Why is the total blank? Okay. I think it comes out to, hmm, should be $8,036. I should have added these up. Okay. And for the month of December, $1,487 to the State of Ohio, $4,950 to Hamilton County, $5,799.90 to the village, and that should be roughly $7,336.40. And that's all I have. Committee reports, Recreation Cable Television, Maria Walther.
We are gearing towards the Harvest Fest. Today, we have a meeting with our staff. We are planning to move it to the commons. We had a plan, rough draft, kind of a plan on how we wanted to look. We also considered the fact that we may need some tents. Whenever we have an inclement weather, we would have to be ready for that, and plywood to put on the areas that are kind of swampy in there. But all in all, it looks like we are ready to attack the situation. I attended the community program in Board, the Waycross Studio, and a couple of things that come to mind was that it was reported that based on additional income received this year, the amount reduced of transfer from the Capital Reserve Fund from $50,000 to $35,000. And it's also expected that this year would be a slight surplus in operating funds. The presentation of the government program report that highlighted the edited packages produced for the Green Hills Harvest Fest, the Forest Park Harvest Fest, the Springfield Township Winter Fest, and also highlighted, of course, our live Talking With Santa program. We have also reported that it's a new master control playback system, went into service December the 1st. And although there was experience on technical difficulties, the issues with the change, et cetera, cable cast, technical support has been very responsive and worked through all the issues with Waycross. For the things happening in Green Hills, I want to announce that Recreation Committee will meet on March the 4th at 9:00 a.m. We are trying to get the commission to meet, Recreation Commission to meet in February prior to ours. We also have on the Village News that American Legion on February the 15th, from 6:00 to 8:00, is going to have a spaghetti dinner, $9.00 a person. We have also tremendous respect for Mike Castor and his crew, for the street services that they performed during the ice and the storm. It was incredible. And my last comment, I want to direct this to Damon Road, the D section. We need to come, one come all, to that meeting on the 29th of January with the village manager here on the village room, right here where we are on council. Please do, please try to come, all of you. I'll be here and just would like to see all of you here. Thank you very much.
Comments or questions? Hearing none in our Governmental Affairs, Laws and Rules, Jack Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We were tentatively scheduled to meet next Monday on the 28th, but as of this point in time, we are lacking agenda items unless something comes up in the interim. So that meeting is tentative at that point. Other than that, Mr. Mayor, I have nothing, nothing to report.
Comments or questions? Hearing none. Safety, Melanie Hermes.
The Safety Committee will meet on Tuesday, March 26th, at 5:30 p.m., prior to our March council meeting. If you have any agenda items, please feel free to email me. And unrelated to my committee, I just also want to give a thank you to Mike Castor and the Services Department, and also to good neighbors that have, we have a good neighbor that has a snow blower, who's always been very generous with his walking ability and helping us out, so.
You have an uncle that has a snow blower and was doing a little community service.
Yes, on your side.
Yes, he was.
Yep.
All right. Community Development, Jeff Holver.
Yes, so we met this past, it was Thursday, January 17th, and we covered some things like how the entryway signs, how that went and that process was going. There was a couple surprises on the entryway signs. A couple of them, a couple of them came in, at least one of them did, with two sides to it.
The Hadley Road one is as well.
Oh, is it? Yeah. And I did get one call from a resident wondering, or actually saying that they felt it was confusing. My thought was, I haven't, just on my own, was, I'm not, if we're mistaken for the park, I don't know if that's that bad, you know, going in that direction. But really, you have to look across the roadway. I don't know if it's a real issue, but, you know, we can talk further about that. And right now, I'm really pleased by the way everything has come together and how they look, and very consistent. It's a very good thing, I believe. We also briefly talked about the street signs. I know that those have to be replaced coming up and legal break, is it a breakaway they have to be?
Reflective.
Reflective.
Okay. But, so there was, was, we touched on that, and we, the shopping center sign is still a work in progress, correct? And, but that, that was pretty much the main things we touched on, and that would conclude my report at this stage.
Comments or questions?
Actually, I did want to clarify, one of the reasons we talked about the street signs was we were looking about the branding and the, maybe not the original, but the historic feel of the street signs. I know that's, I know there was a little bit of confusion about why community development would talk about street signs, and I just wanted to clarify. That was the reason.
Okay. I mean, I didn't know there was confusion about that. I think it's part of...
Streets of services.
Because I've been working on that.
Yeah, just like recreation, you know, our, the survey.
It's all finance. You've got to pay for it all.
No, I think, I think it was probably some of...
Be more fat, right?
Yeah. I think it was more of the branding, yeah. I didn't know it was an issue, but...
I have a question. Did we talk at some point in time that the signage for the village were going to have some kind of reflective, something?
Well, I was looking into it. There, we still could, there was one company that could possibly add glass beads to it, very much like they do on the road, you know, how they put that down on the road. There was one of the quotes that came in, and one person had mentioned as a possibility. I was looking at sandwiching reflective material in the signage. It got very complex. It was a bit experimental, and rather than hold the signage up at this point and try some new things, you know, whether that would work out or not, it just didn't seem to make sense. But we can still ask the question, find out if this vendor that we use was actually the one that mentioned they had the capability of adding the glass beads to it. I think, you know, if, it wouldn't be that hard, I don't think, to do it later down the road if, you know, if that's something they can do.
But I just wondered if that was still on the game plan or not, or what was this?
Not, I mean, not at this point it wasn't. It was just something, we're going to see if it's still a viable option without the complexity of layering up material and all the stuff that can happen with water going in between the signs and that kind of thing, so. But it's a nice feature if we can get it without a lot of pain or price.
Finance and Audit, Glenn Grease.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The 2018 financials are not finalized yet. We're waiting for a couple of bills to come in, and that should be done fairly shortly. So no meeting is scheduled for Finance Committee until those are finalized. I have the responsibility, once a year, of getting together some people that serve on the Fireman's dependency fund. God forbid we ever have to meet except once a year in January, but this is the group of people that, should we have a line of duty death for the fire department, we would meet to administrate the small amount of life insurance that's provided by the state. So we have fulfilled our obligation, turned the paperwork over to the municipal manager for the fiscal officer to put in some numbers, sign it, send it off. And then, at the proper time, I have two resolutions.
All right, Service and Streets, Natasha Metz.
We had a meeting earlier this morning and brought up that the landscape bid is in, so we'll be looking at the resolution of that here coming up. We also have a live bid in to replace the siding on the service garage. And then finally, last thing I wanted to mention is, we had discussed going ahead and applying for the warranty program that would allow residents to kind of buy into it, but after looking at further research, we've got more information about what it does and does not cover. It doesn't look like it would be as beneficial to the residents as we would hope, and not very many good reviews. So I have that information here if anybody wants to look at it. I'm not, we haven't made any decision yet, but I'm leaning towards not applying for it. And our next meeting is February 19th, 9:00 a.m.
Comments or questions? Hearing none. Pool Business, ordinance 2018-10-LNR, second reading. Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance 2018-10, the LNR ordinance amending Section 121.01 of the Village of Green Hills' codified ordinances regarding Rule 12 of the Rules of Council. Whereas the Section 2.08 of the Village Charter provides for the rules of council shall remain in effect until amended, changed, or repealed by a majority of council, and whereas Rule 39 of the Rules of Council provides that the rules of council may be amended, provided notice of the intended amendment shall be given on the floor of council at a previous regular meeting, and whereas notice of these intended amendments have been given on the floor of council at the previous regular meeting, now therefore be it ordained by the council of the Village of Green Hills, Section 1. That Section 121.01 of the Village of Green Hills' codified ordinances be amended as follows. Rule 12, custody of records. The clerk of council shall be responsible for the care and preservation of all ordinances introduced in or placed before council and all, and of all documents, records, and printed matter belonging to council. Further, it shall be the duty of the clerk of council to keep an index record of all ordinances, resolutions passed by council. The information on such index record shall be made available at all reasonable times to the members of council. The clerk of council shall also be responsible for updating the books containing the codified ordinances. These books are to be updated and, I'm sorry, updated are to be as follows. Police Department, Law Director, Municipal Manager, Clerk of Council, Public Library, and the Hamilton County Law Library. Section 2, that this ordinance shall be effective from and after earliest period allowed by law. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this ordinance.
Second.
Okay, been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Clerk Paul Arul.
Mr. Grease?
Aye.
Mr. Holver?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Metz?
Aye.
And Ms. Walther?
Aye.
Okay. Ordinance number 28, 2018-10-LNR passes.
Do we have to change that to 2019? Okay. Thank you.
It was...
New business.
Oh.
But, no, he said we don't.
It was introduced in 2018.
It was introduced in 2018.
It's in 2018.
The first reading was...
We're going to have another calendar your question here in a second, so.
All right.
Stay attentive.
Resolution, Resolution 2019-01-F, Mr. Grease.
Thank you. This is a resolution making supplemental appropriations and transfers, whereas the 2019 annual appropriations that were adopted on December 11th, 2017, are to be amended. Which is the correct, is it? That's okay. That's all right.
The movement of the Section 2 was confusing. This would be the, this would be the amendment of the 2018 annual appropriations.
Yep.
Because it occurs within the, within the year 2018. So that first where I should read the 2018 annual appropriations. I apologize for the error.
As they said in band class, let's take it from the top. Whereas the 2018 annual appropriations that were adopted on December 11th, 2017, are to be amended, and whereas appropriations must not exceed total available resources of the village per Ohio Revised Code, Section 5705.36A5. Therefore, an amended certificate of estimated resources has been requested from the county budget... requested from the County Budget Commission. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, section 1. Since certain actions are needed and the money is appropriated so to permit the Village of Green Hills to meet its fiscal obligations for the year 2019, the following items of expenditure are to supplement the appropriations for the expended...
It doesn't matter, because there were no changes. We can amend it to say anything.
Oh, you're right, in section 1. Never mind. That's right.
For the expenditure of the year 2019, none. Section 2, that the following transfers of funds be made from previously appropriated monies to be made December 31st, 2018. From General Fund 1,000 to Golf Course 2908, amount $6,000. From General Fund 1,000 to Police 2901, $50,000. From General Fund 1,000, Swimming, to Swimming Pool 2909, $21,000. Section 3, this resolution shall take effect and be in full force from and after the earliest date allowed by law. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
Okay, been moved and seconded. Any more questions or comments?
Let me explain what's going on here.
Yes, yes.
Okay. As the finance director was trying to pay all final bills for 2018, we were coming up short in these particular accounts. The money, you had already appropriated the money into the transfer account, so that had been accomplished in the, she checked with the auditors to be sure, and they said, no, that's fine, go ahead and move it into the UAN system. I guess she has to do a transfer. And, but just for her own peace of mind, she wants to have the resolution in place.
Yep.
Authorizing the fact that the transfer actually isn't her.
And this will save us an issue at audit time if this comes up.
Right.
So, this is good and proper.
I apologize. Clerk call the roll. Mr. Rees?
Aye.
Mr. Holter?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Metz?
Aye.
And Ms. Walther?
Aye.
Resolution 2019-01-F passes. Next resolution, 2019-02-SNS, Ms. Metz.
This is a resolution authorizing the municipal manager to enter into an agreement with Grounds Pro LLC, whereas the Village of Green Hills desires to utilize a contractor for mowing and garden bed maintenance. And whereas Grounds Pro submitted the lowest and best bid following a competitive bid process, and is qualified to provide such services. And now, therefore, be it resolved by the council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, section 1, that the municipal manager is hereby authorized to enter into an agreement with Grounds Pro for mowing and garden bed maintenance services. Section 2, that the finance director is authorized to make payments to Grounds Pro pursuant to the bid sheet submitted with their proposal, and totaling $29,141 for the year. Section 3, that the village may, from time to time, request the planting of seasonal flowers that will result in additional expenses, and therefore, payment due Grounds Pro. Section 4, that this resolution shall take effect and be in full force from and after the date of its passage. Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions?
Well, I just wanted to make a comment that whenever they're going to be working on the bed flowers, you know that there are perennials in there to make sure that they are safe, that they are not kind of tossed when they're cleaning the grounds, you know.
And they do apparently have supervisors who are there and folks who know.
Because I know they have a number of backdoors, and they have a number of other things in there as well that are perennials. Okay.
Clerk call the roll.
Excuse me. Mr. Rees?
Aye.
Mr. Holter?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Metz?
Aye.
And Ms. Walther?
Aye.
Okay, Resolution 2019-02-SNS passes. Next resolution, 2019-03-F, Mr. Rees.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a resolution adopting a 2019 Green Hills fee schedule, whereas the village has determined that it is necessary to assess fees for certain services. And whereas council has determined that it is necessary to update the current fee schedule, now therefore be it resolved by the council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, section 1. The council of the Village of Green Hills hereby adopts the fee schedule as set forth in Exhibit A attached here, too, and incorporated herein by reference. Section 2, this resolution shall be and is effective from and after the earliest period allowed by law. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
Just a few comments. We didn't change anything. The only thing we did was remove, so it doesn't cost anything more to do anything in the village in 2019. Where else does that happen? And the only thing we did was remove the banner, because we cannot accomplish that any longer safely.
I have a quick question on the commons. It says $10 per hour for electric for resident/ non-resident, and then $100 per hour rate for non-resident. What, it's just confusing to me. So...
Yeah, I don't think there's a rental rate for a resident, but both would have a $10 electrical rate. But if you're non-resident, then you also pay a rental rate of $100.
Okay, so the $500 is a deposit, and then, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Rees?
Aye.
Mr. Holter?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Metz?
Aye.
And Ms. Walther?
Aye.
Resolution 2019-03-F passes. Next resolution's 2019-04-LNR. I assume that's Mr. Lee.
Doesn't have anybody's name on it.
That'd be fine. That would be me. Resolution 2019-04-LNR, resolution authorizing the village clerk to forward to the Green Hills Planning Commission a proposed amendment to the Green Hills zoning code regarding the definition of a channel letter. Whereas the amendments to the zoning code may be initiated by passage of a resolution by the village council that is then certified by the village clerk and forwarded to the Green Hills Planning Commission for review and recommendation. And whereas the Council Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs, Laws and Rules has developed the attached proposed amendment and would like to initiate formal consideration of the item, now therefore be it resolved by the council of Village, the Village of Green Hills, Ohio. Section 1, the village clerk shall certify and forward to the Green Hills Planning Commission the attached proposed amendment to the Green Hills zoning code. Section 2, the Green Hills Planning Commission, upon receipt of the amendment, shall review, discuss, and approve or modify the amendment, conduct a required public hearing, and convey amendments back to village council with recommendations, all according to section 1151.08 of the Green Hills codified ordinances. And section 3, the village council will eventually receive recommendations back from the Green Hills Planning Commission, at which time the village council will conduct a required public meeting, and then either adopt or deny the recommendations, or adopt some modification of the recommendations of the Green Hills Planning Commission. Section 4, that this resolution is and shall be effective from and after the earliest period allowed by law. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Seconded. Comments or questions?
I mean, what, what this does is it follows a rather arduous path of making, making a change to the zoning, zoning code, but it makes sure that everyone has an input in on it, so.
Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Rees?
Aye.
Mr. Holter?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Metz?
Aye.
And Ms. Walther?
Aye.
Okay, Resolution 2019-04-LNR passes.
Is there any way that we would know when the date of the meeting would be that would notify council, or?
Of the planning meeting.
The planning admission meeting?
Yes. And this could be posted as well. So, yes. May I say something about it?
Yeah.
Yeah, just to let you know that technically what it's doing is, for channel letters, we currently require channel letters. We're still going to require channel letters, but this gives us a little bit more, a better definition of what a channel letter is. I think it'll be very helpful.
Okay. Calendar?
Recreation Committee, March the 4th, 9:00 a.m. An American Legion spaghetti dinner, February the 15th, from 6:00 to 8:00, $9. You can get the ticket pre-sale by any member of the auxiliary, and I'm the chaplain for the auxiliary. You can find me anywhere, and I will sell you the ticket.
March 9th, council retreat.
Streets and Services, February 19th, 9:00 a.m.
Safety Committee, March 26th, at 5:30.
Laws and Rules, tentatively, next Monday, the 28th, at 9:00 a.m.
Okay, is that it? All right, move to adjourn.